I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Would you please stand and join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you like to do rule call?
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember White, barely there, but yes. Councilmember Dan Han?
Present.
Council President Cox?
Present.
Councilmember Stubble?
Present.
Councilmember Josh Han?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Present.
You have a quorum, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We're headed into approval of the agenda. Have some changes? Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move to amend the agenda. Number five, under new business, item D, we need to include First Interstate Bank. They did get the information to us just this afternoon. We need to add them to the agenda.
And again, motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Move to approve the agendas modified.
In second?
Second.
Motion by Councilperson Larson, sent by Councilman Cox. The agenda is presented with the modification. I'm gonna call for the question. Councilman Jay Han?
Yes.
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 Okay. Moving on, we have a public hearing. About twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six liquor license. I'm gonna open the public hearing at six oh three. It's open. You wanna introduce the reading, Michelle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As advertised in the newspaper and on the agenda, the liquor licenses as set forth in the newspaper are up for renewal. Lander's renewals run from February twentieth to February twentieth, and by ordinance and statute, they have to be approved by the council at least thirty days before their expiration date. So those renewals that you see before you would run from February twenty-first of two thousand twenty-five to February twentieth of two thousand twenty-six. I have no information from the police department, and of course, Captain Wa is here if council members have questions here or later in the agenda. My understanding from Kevin Culo, our deputy, is that all the paperwork has been submitted to the state. Any correction memos that the state might have had have been addressed and cleared.
Okay, counsel?
Mayor, if I may?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Captain Wa, thanks for standing in and our condolences to Chief Peters on his loss of a family member. Can you let us know if you have any concerns with any of these entities in terms of cooperation with your department or any hotspots with frequencies of violations of laws?
Actually, I, excuse me, I spent probably the last hour kinda going through our calls for service through two thousand twenty-four. I focused mostly on the bars, not the restaurants with the licenses, but the bars. I obviously read reports every day, but it helps to put a number to it, and I think probably from the police department point of view, we do have issues with, it's now called the Grizzly Bar. It used to be called the End Zone. We've taken seven calls for service there just in the month of December. We took sixteen calls for service in two thousand twenty-four, and I can't recall exactly when they opened, but they were closed for a large portion of the year. That's more calls than we took at any of our other bars. It almost equals all the other bars combined. So, yeah, that's a hotspot for us. We're there a lot.
Mayor, if I may?
Go ahead.
You wanna follow up, Councilman?
I'm probably following up the same thing. So I'm curious is if that is a hotspot to what, on what basis can we either go ahead and issue a permit or deny it? What's our, what's our criteria for that?
There really isn't a criteria. It's up to you if you wanna issue the license or not. I believe this is for Zander's, right?
No.
Oh, it's not. I was looking at the wrong one. Okay, sorry about that. But, yeah, it's still up to the council. That's just input from staff giving you background information. So there is no criteria. It's still up to you.
Mayor.
Go ahead.
Council Phillips, what do you think about, is there a way that we could renew on a provisional basis until we come up with some agreed-upon plan for mitigation? Or I'm scrambling here to make something up, but some agreement they could have with the police department as to what they're putting in place to avoid the sorts of altercations that they seem to be having?
Potentially, I guess you could, but I don't know what the state will think of that. And that would be something we would have to check with the state liquor division to see if they would accept that. And that is, that is a potential issue. And that's something I just, we would have to call and talk to them and see what their thoughts are on that. I mean, it's our obligation to accept or deny their license and issue that license, but the state still regulates that.
Billy?
Just something that I've visited with the mayor and the chief about. I don't know that we'd have to mirror the city ordinance as a whole, but in my experience in Sheridan, there was ordinances in place that there was steps that we would take as far as they were required to call in any altercation to law enforcement. If they didn't, then there was repercussions on their license. Anytime we responded to a fight at those where we could determine that the patrons involved in the fight were heavily intoxicated, the bartenders were cited for over-service. There's a lot of those types of things that are laid out in their ordinance. I don't know how that would transition. I mean, that's a better question for Adam and you guys, how the new ordinance comes down. But I think it's worth probably visiting some kind of best practices procedures that we can put in place for these bar owners, that there's something that comes back to them, that they're required to have some ownership in it before we end up in a position like we are with the Grizzly or the End Zone.
Go ahead.
I thank you for that. I would be in total agreement for that. I'm also personally a bit disappointed since that particular owner on the transfer license assured us that there would be better management and avoiding some of those issues. So clearly something, I mean, we're obviously singling that bar out, but I think it would behoove us in general to have some teeth in our ordinances to be able to direct best behaviors and practices at these establishments.
One of the things that the chief and I have visited about, quite frankly, under the law, under the licensing laws, the only repercussions we have right now at the police department is to shut the bar down. Under their liquor licenses, we can do that in a, for a safety issue, right? If it gets to the point where our community and our patrons are not safe, we as law enforcement can just walk in and shut the bar down. I don't know that that's the right answer, right? I think if we, if we do this right and put it in place where everybody follows the same rules, but there's steps, right? It's a progressive issue. He is not cooperative with us. I can tell you that.
Mayor? Go ahead, Councilperson Larson.
Yes, could we go ahead and just table that particular license for right now and?
I'd be up to.
Well, Mayor, if I may, there is a, you know, there's the thirty-day, we have to approve thirty days prior. So their license would expire February twentieth, I believe, is what Rochelle Fontaine told us earlier. Is that, is that accurate?
We could call a special meeting, but it would have to be, a decision would need to be made no later than January twentieth. So thirty days before the, which is next Monday.
Councilman Han?
Can their license be terminated midterm? Can you terminate during the year?
I'm not a hundred percent sure if it could. I'd have to look at the ordinances a little bit closer. I would assume that there would have to be some sort of infraction that would qualify them to terminate that. The council can't just say, we're going to terminate this for any old reason. I do like the idea of looking at the ordinances and coming up with better ordinances, but I don't know how that will affect your guys' decision-making today in regards to this particular license.
Let me take a comment from before. You have something else?
Nope.
Let's, we'll have to get this sitting down at work session, get this figured out, what we wanna do. I take comments from the floor? Right.
I think I can do it, lesson six.
Okay, we'll let you go.
And, okay. And I've been told that my words are pretty much a waste of time, but I'm prepared, so here we go, all right? "The drug alcohol destroys, depresses, maims, vanquishes, cripples, robs, steals, kills, injures, causes addiction, and does so totally indiscriminately and without prejudice. To alcohol and individuals' race, religion, gender is inconsequential, makes no difference at all. If a person chooses on their own to use alcohol, well, that is their choice, their decision. Whatever happens, whatever happens is on them. They go in with their eyes open, and there should not be any whining or complaining down the road. Nope, that's on them. But what I vehemently, vehemently object to is government encouraging citizens to use this most destructive of all drugs. How are elected officials, city leaders, encouraging citizens to use this drug? Although there are many, let me offer just one such example. Lander has been allocated twenty-seven liquor licenses, not the state of Wyoming, not twenty-seven for Fremont County, but just the tiny little city of Lander, all by itself, twenty-seven liquor licenses. Now, just because you're allocated twenty-seven liquor licenses, that does not mean the city has to use them all. The city certainly does not have to embrace, activate, and employ all twenty-seven. This simply means that they can use from zero to twenty-seven licenses, but no more. But seemingly, without any consideration for possible negative effects, Lander embraces and activates all twenty-seven. And if the city was allocated ten more, I'm sure those would be used as well. It seems to me as if you just can't get enough. By the way, I find it interesting to note that Lander has two or three grocery stores, three colleges, if you count Knowles, two or three gas station quick stops, two outdoor stores, nineteen churches, and twenty-seven liquor licenses." Good, crazy. "I realize liquor licenses are all about money, and apparently pushing alcohol is very lucrative. With that said, obviously, from the profits that are, that a few are receiving, the invisible cost of collateral damage must be deducted. Medical costs related to cirrhosis of the liver, cancer, heart disease, the cost of recovery from addiction to alcohol, the cost of treatment for depression, thoughts of suicide, expenses related to destroyed families, destroyed careers. How about the cost of lost property due to alcohol-related accidents such as fires, et cetera? Expenses related to the result of fetal alcohol syndrome. Not to mention that in many cases fetal alcohol syndrome is often a lifelong condition that requires treatment and care. Costs of incarceration due to crimes committed while under the influence, including a variety of homicides such as murder. Costs associated with child abuse, spouse abuse, destroyed families and divorce. Costs associated with property loss. Oh, and of course, at ten thousand dollars each, the cost of the funerals for the hundred and seventy-eight thousand deaths which will, which will occur this year as a result of excessive drinking. By the way, in the USA from two thousand sixteen to two thousand twenty-one, there was a twenty-nine, twenty-nine percent increase in alcohol-related deaths from one hundred and thirty-eight thousand to one hundred and seventy-eight thousand. Statistically, Lander supports the habit of around four thousand users of this drug. This is not very many people. Do we really need twenty-seven liquor licenses to service these four thousand people? I mean, nineteen churches easily service around seven, seven thousand six hundred citizens. Does it really require twenty-seven liquor licenses to satisfy four thousand drinkers? You gotta be kidding me. So anyway, when you deduct the expenses associated with the collateral damage as a result of the use of alcohol from the profits, deduct that from the profits that a few are making, in actuality, I believe there is little or no profit being realized. In closing, let me once again ask, why does our city have to encourage drug use? Why can't the city at least remain neutral? Or perhaps even better, why can't the city point out the harm and even encourage people not to use alcohol? Why does a city at every opportunity insist upon encouraging our citizens, our young people, to use the most destructive drug on earth? Is it just for the money? I mean, like the Brew Fest and nonsense like that. Twenty-seven liquor licenses, really, folks? Is this demonstrating morally sound leadership? Is this the best we can do, Mayor, council members? Before routinely sweeping in all twenty-seven liquor licenses, please think about the terrible negative consequences your actions will have. Personally, I don't believe Lander needs even one liquor license, but twenty-seven? Lander has nineteen churches. Do we really need more liquor licenses than churches? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
So I pulled up in our code, and I'm curious to hear from Adam and Captain Wa. This is sufficient for, and of course, for our council. So Title II, two-six, grounds for suspension, revocation, or non-renewal. A states violations by the holder of any provisions of this title or of Title twelve of the Wyoming statutes, a court conviction shall be presumptive evidence of such violation. B, that the premises, while licensed in the name of the holder, are the scene of repeated or continuing violations of any ordinance or law, and that the initial violation occurred while the premises were licensed in the name of the holder, and the holder had knowledge of the first violation or delays correcting a continuing violation. And in my mind, I think that gives us grounds from what we've heard from Captain Wa that there is evidence to the, that would support food for thought as we move towards the voting section.
All right. Any else?
John Shade here in Lander wasn't prepared to speak on this, but since the captain spoke about Zander's, I lease a business property across the street from Zander's. And I would really love to see the city go ahead and adopt some type of ordinance to have a graduated thing to possibly suspend or to fully revoke a liquor license. And my rationale for that is when Zander's was closed for quite a few months because of.
Yeah, this is not Zander's.
End Zone, sorry, and I did mean End Zone.
Yeah.
It's across the street from.
We just wanna make that very clear.
We just wanna make that clear.
I'm gonna blame Adam on that one. All right, so the End Zone, so I leased the property across Seventh Street, so we.
There you go.
All right. But anyways, when they were closed for repairs, we had no problems with our parking lot. Now that they have restarted and started serving again, come to our parking lot on Friday mornings, and it is tons of beer bottles in there and other kinds of liquor. We have cars, which I'm glad they're not drinking and driving, but we have a lot of cars that seem to be parked there and get moved sometime later in the day. So to me, I am actually seeing where this is impacting my business, because I'm trying to have a professional business. And yet, because of another business not being as kosher as I think they should be, it makes ours look bad. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, thank you very much. I'm gonna close this public hearing at six twenty. Close. We're moving on to item number four. Is a public hearing application for retail liquor license, number ten. Rachel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as advertised in the paper, the city did receive an application for a transfer of retail license number ten from WR Holding LLC Zander's to Bailey Enterprises Incorporated, doing business as Pit Stop Six LLC. My understanding is that it will be in the same location as WR Holdings, and I do see a number of folks in the audience available to comment, speak, answer questions, should anybody have any of those. I also, sorry, Mr. Mayor, would, would want to point out that this transfer would be for the remainder of the term of the current Zander's license as well as the renewal. So approximately thirty-five-ish days on the current license would then transfer into the Pit Stop license. It would no longer be Zander's or Zander's responsibility, but then it would be Bailey's for the remainder through February twentieth and then starting February twenty-first, that next term.
Counsel, questions on that one? Communication from the floor. Mike, you're here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counsel. Again, we have, are in contract to purchase the, the Zander's truck stop up on the hill, and they do have a packaged retail liquor license that we're asking to get transferred into our name. It's our policy to have all of our employees tips trained so that they are very aware of all the regulations that they need to follow. We have a zero tolerance policy. If anybody sells anybody underage, they no longer have their job. So we take it very, very seriously, along with, you know, the tobacco that we sell and all those kind of things. So we follow that very stringently. Again, it's just a packaged retail. There's no consumption onsite. It's all off-premises. So again, I don't think they've ever had any issues. And again, our intent is to make sure it's run properly, and we will follow all the laws to the best of our ability. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, concerns? Hey, since there's none, any comments from the public? Other than Mike? None? Okay, I'm gonna close this public hearing at six twenty-three. Close. Hey, we're moving on. New business, non-action items, administering the oath of office for the area of active city council members, Melinda Cox, Dan Nolan, and Julia Stubble. You wanna come down here with Adam? Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations, Melinda. Congratulations, Dan. Okay, that was simple one. Complete official depository disclosures. Rachel?
So each council member should have in front of them the, the notice that is required to be signed every year disclosing which financial institutions, the city of Lander, uses its depositories that you might have funds in or with, and we will have those on file. Some of you have already filled them out. We're excited, but.
Yeah, we're just wanting to stay on top of things. Okay, so, uh, Councilwoman Cox, this is your time.
This is my time. Okay. A couple of, of issues, not issues, just a couple of things that we'd like to improve upon with our council liaison positions and our duties with our council positions. So first off, we're talking about our duties as council members. The, the most important thing is that we make sure that we read all of the packets that are provided to us. You know, we get all the information that we need to have, and if you don't, if you're unable to access, because I know there's been some technology issues that we need to make sure that Rochelle knows and that we get access to all the information that we need. It's very important that we do that, especially in today's day and age with information that goes out sometimes that isn't always accurate or full truths. And we as council members need to be that layer of information for our constituents, our staff, and our council as a whole. And, and it's, if you're unable to do that, we do have the ability to get you the information that you need in a timely fashion. The other issue is that we are looking at assigning, tonight will be my last night as council president. I hope, anyway, I'm, I'm nominating, I'm nominating another council member. But we looked at, the mayor and I looked at liaison positions, and we are assigning every council member at least two auxiliaries so that we can cover the community and get the information that we need. You know, oftentimes, we learn more in those meetings than we do anywhere else. So there is a form that has been forwarded to Rochelle Fontaine and to the mayor, and it is basically assigning those positions. In the event there are conflicts, other council members can cover. I know that with LEDA, several times with my travel, I was unable to attend, and Missy White was, Councilmember White was happy to step in and do that. There's a couple of liaison positions that are pretty intense. Those are Planning Commission, School District, LEDA specifically. There's some strategic planning happening with all of those things, and so there have been two council members assigned to those. And that follows our, our standards. So it is, I think, as we move forward to becoming a better council and to, you know, we're in a good position right now. We have an incredible staff. They stay above, above the line all the time. They don't get into the weeds with, with things that are said or attacks that happen to them. But we as council member needs to be more informed and better ready to serve our community. And we can only do that if we're reading the information that we're getting and that we're contacting folks if we have questions. And it's not a lecture. This is as much to myself as it is to anybody else. But it's time these next few years to really dig in as we move towards new strategic plan that is supposed to be happening this year and just moving our community forward in a much better direction. If you have any questions about that, I, that, I didn't get that, those assignments to Rochelle until yesterday. So are you able to forward those? Well, I didn't get them to you in time.
There was, um,
There is one from, Regine sent it out. I corrected it and then shared it.
I see the one that went in the packet was the older one. I thought it was the newer one. Okay, that's right. I will absolutely share.
Okay. We don't know those, but I I could pull them up. Oh, I have them right here. So the Chamber of Commerce will be the council liaison, Melinda Cox. Golf course board will be Melinda Cox. The Lander Old Timers Rodeo Association will be Josh Hahn. The Planning Commission Board of Adjustments, Dan Hahn and John Larson. Propoja Conservation District, John Larson. Senior Center Board, John Larson. Oh, geez, I can't read that. Okay. Environment, Environment and Energy Task Force, Missy White. School District One, Julia Stubel and Josh Hahn. Fremont County Solid Waste, Missy White. Lander Economic Development Association, Dan Hahn and Missy White. And the Urban Tree Board will be Julia Stubel. She's currently on that. However, it's a new board, so we're asking that she remain the same. Was really a, there was no rhyme or reason, really just trying to mix things up and get some people some access to things. There's a couple, just to, for full transparency, the Lander Economic Development Association, they're into the process of a strategic plan and moving our community forward. And so we're asking that Missy White get back on that association as she has an extensive amount of history in that field and brings historical knowledge. And then Dan can assist with his historical knowledge with Lander, really. So anyway, there was some thought and consideration put into all of these positions. And and we just appreciate all the work that you guys do and and want even more. So there you go. I'll pass it down. And then do we, is this also where we're nominating council president or is that later on?
That's at the end.
Well, that's at the end. Okay, perfect. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions if you turn? No. I don't break it. Okay, we're going to move on real quick. Communication from the floor. If there is any, step up, state your name and your address where you live and you'll have three minutes. So.
Janelle Hanlander. After watching the tragedy of the news of the fires in Southern California and hearing a broadcaster on a mainstream media news state, this is what happens when you cram houses together like sardines and it is a hazard to firefighters. At this point, I would really, really like to thank the council members who voted against the proposed zoning that would have had more condensed housing. And I would also like to make it known and to thank the Fremont County firefighters that have a truck out in Southern California and they're helping assist with the fires. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Charles Woolwine, congratulations, Councilman Hahn, Cox and Stubel. And I appreciate y'all giving me a little time here to, my three minutes here. In my opinion, the equality state of Wyoming should be a safe haven for all unborn little girls and boys. And if not all of Wyoming, then at least our city of Lander should cowboy up and lead the way and serve as an example for the rest of the state. I believe if we do the right thing, then eventually the rest of Wyoming will follow our lead. By the way, this talk will take about thirty minutes. So at three minutes of meeting, it will require about ten months to complete. Mayor Richardson, in the year twenty twenty-three, in the USA, due to shark attacks, there were two fatalities. One in California and another one in Hawaii. Cause? Sharks were hungry. That's it. That's all there was to it. These sharks were hungry and they recognized people as an easy source of food. In the same year, in the USA, we allowed over one million thirty-seven thousand of our unborn children to be killed. That's approximately two thousand eight hundred forty-one unborn little girls and boys killed each and every day. Causes? Forty percent, or about four hundred fourteen thousand, were killed due to financial reasons. As in, oh, no, we're pregnant? No way. We can't afford a baby right now. That's impossible. Another thirty-six percent, or about three hundred seventy-three thousand, were killed as a result of poor timing. As in, oh, man, I'm headed off to college. A baby would be so inconvenient. A baby would really cramp my style. Yes, I want to start a family someday, but not right now. And another thirty-one percent, or three hundred twenty-one thousand, were killed due to the mom having partner-related issues, as in, man, he is not who I want to spend my life with. No way. He's awful. He's a nightmare. Gross. What was I thinking? Yes, due to the fact that sometimes more than one category was selected, the figures added up to more than a hundred percent. In addition, it should be noted that during the year of twenty twenty-three in Wyoming, as near as I can determine, as a result of having to make a choice between the life of the mother or the life of the unborn child, not a single unborn baby was killed, not one, or or mother. Not one, zero percent. So in one year, two were killed due to shark attacks and we think how aw, and we think how awful. But two thousand eight hundred forty-one unborn children are killed every day and we go, ah, yeah, uh-huh, so what? After all, this baby is in my body, so I can kill it if I want to. Okay, to be continued next month. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comment? Since there is none, we're going to move on. To mayor and council updates. Councilman Larson.
Okay, Mayor, thank you. Just wanted to update everyone that the Lotra Arena has has been going forward and and has been making some improvements with the with the arena, with the ground, with everything they're doing and and the the arena is actually being utilized more so now than it has been in several years. And people using the arena state that is because of the improved maintenance and ground prep that is being performed in the area. So they're they're doing some things there to 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 help the process and the the whole roping arena go go forward. Also, the new transfer building out there, the solid waste facility is very close to being completed due to increased compaction on the landfill site. The life of the landfill is being extended by last I heard was twenty twenty-seven, I think. Don't don't hold me to that, but I think about two years is what they've extended it so far. So that that's been a good deal. I believe that's all I've got for now, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman White.
Thank you, Mayor. John, congrats on being liaison to the senior center. You're going to love that crowd. They had their meeting this morning. A few things to share with them. One is they are doing their prime rib dinner fundraiser on February eighth. Tickets are forty dollars. They'll be doing a raffle of a pistol as well for that to for continued fundraising. They're using their electric cars more and more, which they're pleased with because it's helping cut down their cost. Also, just a neat shout out, some amazing anonymous donor paid for all of the Christmas dinners, which is just remarkable. It's like three hundred plus meals that that person covered. That's, so smile at everyone you meet on the street. Could be that person. And lastly, and probably most exciting, is the Wimpy Burger is back. That post, I put it out for them close to lunchtime and it has already been shared sixty-seven times. I I think people are going to be like in the parking lot overnight as if it's a concert ticket to try to get tickets. So the tickets go on sale this Thursday for that. Lance, I want to say the flashing stoplights, if folks are not seeing those, I don't know what you need to do. I mean, they, I can see them from four blocks away. So many travels north on South Third frequently. So I'm I'm hoping that helps. The the fellow next to you and his team have a few less incidences as well. So thank you for that. On a related, oh, actually, I also want to note for this senior center. So they've gotten two new drivers and one is someone that's very familiar to the city of Lander. Kevin Johnson is driving for them. They cannot say enough good things about Kevin and he's literally just jumped right in and neat with his perspective to share that. So he's driving forty to sixty miles a day and doing rides around town. And collectively, all the drivers have done as many as ninety rides in a day. That's kind of a high mark for them. Usually it's around like the sixty to seventy range. But that's an incredible service that they're providing for folks. That's pretty awesome. In, excuse me, in other transportation news, Central Wyoming Regional Airport had best year ever in our recorded history. Twenty-one thousand seven hundred and four deployments for twenty twenty-four. So and the the last high of that was just shy of seventeen thousand in two thousand and eight. So lots, lots of folks are using it. Again, the challenge is, that doesn't mean the the revenue guarantee goes away, that how much we get per ticket depends on the overall price and the and the overall miles flown. So if folks fly only to Denver, please do that. That would be awesome. We would get all of the revenue from that. But if you continue on to, say, Chicago, then we get less money. If you then continue from Chicago to London, we get even less money over all of the ticket. So that's the challenge. But the good news is, it is certainly a resource that lots of folks are using and we're really pleased with that. So with that, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Hahn.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight I want to speak about YDOT. This is from my eyes from sixteen years of employment and I'm speaking to better inform the public and the people of of this room of the magnitude of the Wyoming Department of Transportation operations provide. I have gathered some information to possibly educate the public on who they are and what they do. YDOT is the largest safety-oriented organization in Wyoming. They employ two thousand people in sixty locations and are Wyoming's largest agency. They are engineer-based and mostly run on engineers. Some of the best minds in the country to serve the safety needs of the traveling public, whether it be vehicles, bicycles or pedestrians. They have big shoes to fill and provide an excellent service to Wyoming. They provide safety for thousands of people year round. YDOT's operations consist of, but not all, maintenance planning and new construction on eight thousand miles of highway. They have two thousand bridges. They assist and support on twelve hundred bridges they don't own. They have fencing, borrow pits, guardrail signs, mile markers, delineators, culverts, traffic lights, cameras, animal crossings. They remove animals dead and alive, law enforcement, engineering and job job management, snow control, snow fence, highway striping, airports and aviation support and mechanics. YDOT works off five-year planning cycles. They have a multitude of high priority projects in this plan. So when people want a project of their own or feel that YDOT is not there to help them, please think about their big safety plan is regarding hundreds of project projects and are already on, that are already on schedule. Consider the task of prioritizing the traveling public safety as a whole for the great state of Wyoming. And P.S., travel the United States and you'll find out how lucky we are and we have some of the best highways in the country. We are very lucky to have an organize, organization that provides the high level of safety that we have and we are truly spoiled and blessed. I mean, I've done a lot of traveling in the last month or so and it's unbelievable. I I thank YDOT for what they do and and I don't think, I I don't think a lot of people really understand what they have. That's why I wanted to bring this to table, just to educate people on who they are and what they do. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Cox.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. First of all, LEDA is going through a strategic planning. They, you know, revamped, added new members and are really trying to, I guess, figure out what it is that the city wants, what the direction to go and how they can enhance and capitalize on what they're doing. So I'm excited for folks to be involved with that discussion as it moves forward. Really good group of people. We spent a all-day Sunday, a Sunday here not too long ago, going over just really identifying our needs. And I did want to make a comment. Mike Bailey had talked about his folks have been TIPS trained and I don't know if everybody knows what that is, but it's essentially a state-approved alcohol courses that are available through Wyoming and they provide on-premise alcohol-serving training and there's other food handler trainings, et cetera. And there was, at a time, there was that was a requirement. Is that still a requirement? Do we know?
It may be a little out of turn, Councilwoman, but I believe it's acquire a requirement based on each municipality.
Okay.
I don't know that it's a state-issued requirement.
Right.
But usually it's broke down within jurisdictions of either counties or cities where they can add that as their requirement for liquor license holders.
Okay, I know that Fremont County years ago had a pretty big push to make sure that all establishments were trained.
That that is true, Council President, and what the captain says is true. Fremont, Tana Groom-Smith and her group came and asked the council if they would enact a resolution or ordinance that required all liquor license holders to have their staff go through TIPS training. The council at that time did not opt to do that. So we currently don't have anything on our books for that. But it's still an option for you guys. And if you want to add that to an ordinance while you're looking at tightening up the you know, actions that the police can take for a existing liquor license, that's one that you could add.
Thank you for that. We also used to do, I'm going to call them sting operations, where we'd have underage folks go into establishments. Are we still doing that?
We are still doing it. It's every year the state will issue X amount of funds based on your licenses. I think probably most of them are success rate here, but to be frank with you, the size of community that we are, it usually takes one, one establishment and then word travels super fast that that's what we're doing, right? So I don't know. I, Sergeant Millington is the one that takes care of that for me and as I've progressed through this shoulder surgery and them making me stay in the office, those are some of the things that I'm starting to visit more of how we're doing them. It might be best for us to break them up.
Okay.
More so.
Thank you for that. I think I think those are valuable. And the reason I do think that is because there's a imminent accountability piece. So there's a violation, that violation is pretty significant. Sometimes it's a loss of a job as well. But I think the message is sent pretty clear that we don't, that we certainly don't tolerate that at least. And I will also make a comment, just a comedic comment. I was in Washington DC last week and you talk about snow removal. They don't know how to do it there. They have no clue. And it's because they don't get any snow. And so it's so funny because they got like four inches of snow and you would have thought, I mean, it was a disaster. The sidewalks were a disaster. The gutters were a disaster. I was in awe. And I walked completely around the Capitol and all of those things and it was a mess everywhere. So there's some benefit living in Wyoming for sure. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Stubel.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I have actually some questions for Council President Cox, while I still get to use the term for her. Um, LEDA strategic planning, can you tell us more about the timeline? That can sometimes be a lengthy process and what's the timeline for them and when will we be engaged in providing the direction that I believe they're seeking?
So the engagement will come via via and through the liaison. And their timeline, their meeting again the twenty-eighth of January. And again, on, now I'm saying this off the top of my head, so please know that there could be a mistake. And the twenty-eighth is And the twenty-eighth is good, but then the February fifteenth, I believe, they're bringing in the Wyoming Economic Development to talk about planning with them. So that's their initial meeting with, with that organization. And so any input would be, it would be nice if the council would deliver that via and through the liaison. Because there's two of them.
Thank you, Mayor, if I may.
Go ahead.
So it occurs to me, and then I'll still be too surprised to hear it, that we sometimes provide contradictory direction to the committees and boards that we have. So do the liaisons, maybe it's more hypothetical at the moment, but do the liaisons have what they need for council direction for LIDA? Or shall we have a work session about the direction we want to provide for the liaisons to carry forward to LIDA?
I think that's a great solution. I do think it'll be helpful. Their, their strategic planning really boils down to how that organization or how that association can work within their parameters to, I guess, to, to evolve in a sense of really being a, a working group and bringing some things to the community and having some different ideas. So, so having some council input with direction would be well received. So a work session, even the next one, maybe would be perfect.
Just to let you know, we're starting our strategic planning too here coming up.
Well, I understand.
But they should be in line with what we.
Well, it's a little bit different.
But they still could come and.
Right. What they're proposing and what they're looking at is, is slightly different. But they would need to be in line with the city of, yes, the City of Lander strategic plan and what we need from them. And there's some ideas, right now it's brainstorming primarily, starting over a little bit with that and trying to move the needle with more intention than has been done in the past few years.
Great, thanks, Mayor. And I think just on that topic, Regine, can you verify for me? Our MOU with them is fairly out of, maybe not fairly, but has some errors we should clean up.
Right now, we reviewed it and LIDA has that in front of their board also. The only thing that's inconsistent right now is the lift requirements that you guys have expanded the lift board. So we need to fix that. I've been talking to Stacy Hall, the president of LIDA now, and great, great guy, great character. So they didn't want to redo that MOU until they knew what this would look like. But there is a chance when we renew that MOU, it's not expired or anything. It just needs to be updated because of the lift clause. But there's a chance to get in on that MOU and codify all the decisions that you guys made.
That's exactly what I was thinking. It's reminded tonight of the reasoning of why we put a lot of this in writing. And I think that MOU could be a place where we, it's high level, but we provide a degree of sideboards other than we can be accountable to as well in terms of the direction we're providing. Thanks, Mayor. My other update from being a liaison is not the most exciting, but I'm pretty excited by it. The tree board who's been informing for the last few months, and we all know how forming works for committees. It's sometimes a iterative process, but they have landed on a set of draft bylaws. So yay. It's super exciting for us because we've been working on that for a while. And I was wondering, Councilor Phillips or Clerk Fontaine, do you want to review those? Either of you, do you want the council to see them? The council probably doesn't want to, but you want to see them. Lovely, I'll get those to you. Thanks, Mayor, that's what I have.
Mayor, if I may.
Go ahead.
On all of our boards where they have bylaws, the council does adopt and review those. The fire hall, the housing authority. So if, if Adam reviews them first, then I assume they will be on a future agenda.
Be the best reading of.
All right, Councilwoman Hahn.
I got nothing this evening, Mayor.
All right, thank you. I just want to thank Dan and Melinda and Julia for, for their name in the hat again. This is not a fun place to be. That's, we don't do it because it's fun. So there's hard decisions they have to make and I think they make the best with the hearts they got and trying to keep everything on even playing field. So I want to thank you three very much for putting your, your names in the hat and giving it another go. So thank you. And thank everybody else for just being here and doing this too. So it's not easy. I'll start with staff updates. I know I wasn't going to come to you, Captain Wall, but I'm going to start with you.
Not a lot, um, business as usual. I think we're doing really well. It was exciting for me to look at the one year behind me now that I've been here a year and how much we've progressed. I personally would like to thank the mayor and the council for your support for our agency. I, I love it here. I mean, and this is a super new town and we got a great group of guys and we're doing a lot of good things. So I appreciate you guys for the support with that, but life is good here.
I was wondering if you wanted to speak about that new camera you just got.
Well, so most of you know that Chief Peters is a nerd and a big one. He actually made a purchase. We're the only one in the entire state, I think, if I'm correct, we're the only one within several states of us. But he had purchased a very special investigation camera for our detectives division that it's, it's pretty impressive. It was to the tune of over forty thousand dollars. But you can walk into a crime scene and change the different lenses on the camera for blood splatter, anything that was cleaned up, where they tried to clean up. One of the examples they showed us was a decomposed body that had been decomposed for a couple of weeks to where it was black and changed the lens. And it exposed their tattoos and all of their markings. It's, it's absolutely impressive. I think we've probably taken Detective Maddox and Sergeant Luderman's job away from him because it's pretty simple now. But it, it's absolutely impressive if you ever have time and get the time to swing over. We'd be more than happy to show it to you. It's pretty awesome.
Thank you. Lance.
Yes, Mayor and Council, thank you. Just want to give a few project updates. We had a pre-bid meeting today for McFarland Drive. So that's one of the major infrastructure projects. We're going to bid and hopefully be under construction this summer on the Gannapick Schools. We're moving forward on that project and should have that under construction this summer. Lincoln Street from end to end will be under construction this, construction this summer. The meter project will be finishing up. We're about a third of the way through those meters at this point in time and it's going well. They told me it slowed, slowed down a little bit after the holidays and they've come back. They're not doing pit meters right now. They're aware of the weather and still trying to strategically change meters without having any problems. But that's still moving forward. Tank and pump station, we extended that. Hopefully that's done this spring if all goes well. Bishop Randall by the hospital, that'll be under construction. So that's waterline expanded roadway that'll be working, will be working on up there as well. So quite the full plate as far as construction this summer that we'll be working on. We, a few months back, I talked to you about going down into Casper, trying to secure additional fund for our wells project. It was a water development project. Unfortunately, they've cut their funding back to about fifty percent from the sixty-six percent that we're eligible for across the board for everyone. So we came back with not extra funds, but more of a direction like, okay, if you can value engineer this, you can spend sixty-seven percent of our funds if you don't spend all the funds because we were already in the queue. So I'm back to the drawing board on that one, trying to figure out if we could maybe not build the building and run more pipe back to the existing UV building at the water treatment plant and then treat there. So these wells are around the four million gallon tank is where they're going in at or not install all the wells right away, phase this project, go back for more money. But right now we've maxed out our enterprise funds in these projects. We've got the optional one percent plus the SRF match and the grant money. As we're moving through nine major projects and doing major construction projects, I mean, money only goes so far. So still trying to figure out, hey, how do we do more? We're also trying to figure out how do we manage all of this? When you look at this, this is, you know, I'm glad that we have Hunter, but each one of these projects takes a meeting. And if any of them goes poorly, that takes a lot of staff time. You're going to keep moving on infrastructure as, as much as we can. But we talked about kind of being at a grant max for at least this year or the next few years as we fill in what the staff is capable of. So if you guys have more questions on infrastructure projects, happy to answer them or coming to a work session to, you know, talk about these projects in more depth if you guys have any more information you'd like from them.
Questions? Councilman Hahn?
Two questions. One, what is going to go on, you know, Bomb Guards that, that mess up there? I've had calls on that. And then the other is over here at the triplexes. I've been getting a lot of complaints. And I, I went and looked at it and the slope, the way they sloped away from the triplexes and the way the, the way the alley is, it looks like it's really going to be, it looks like the water is just going to run down and run into people's yards. And is there any plans for that or, or in, in the future? Is there any plan to try to keep track of that?
Sure, I'll answer both questions. And so let's start with up at Bomb Guards. So we've had issues in the past that groundwater and the clay layer up there is very, very shallow. And when frost shows up, it tends to move water around. And we have very old water lines in the area that are made of ductile iron pipe. And this is one of our major infrastructure projects is to replace that ductile pipe with PVC that doesn't react to the soil. So when we pull pipe out of the ground out there, we can see pipe has been chewed away from the soil reacting. And so not saying that it's not us, but we've dug that intersection up and zero leaks. You know, just found the groundwater and stormwater diversions. And every time we dig it up, we put back in clean crushed gravel and rock so that it's packed in tight. And that's definitely a weak point and a low point for water at this point. So anything in that area is finding its way down. We hired leak detection and they came in and listened and they didn't hear anything. And they said it's inconclusive. And they said maybe at the edge of the rock, we might hear something. And we're talking about it internally, like, do we chase something that might not be there? And then if we tear that up, it's going to be way worse, you know, for the winter on pedestrians. Or do we manage this and then go after that in the spring and see what we have? We talked about, you know, if we go in at that location, we may be chasing all the way back up the road until we find something or not find something. And then, you know, it was just groundwater again, or the ditches feed in that area. Cemetery ditch is just above that. They have open jointed pipe. You have a ton of pumping going on in that subdivision and area. So everybody is, you know, to manage their house or stinking in their ability to de-water as well. So it just, that has been kind of anomaly in the area. We've seen some of those in other areas that just during the winter, the freezing forces water up and then it goes away in the spring. So I'm curious to see what's going to happen. If it gets worse, we're continuing to monitor it for chlorine. That's one of our big, you know, if we find chlorine in something.
Sure.
We go after it. And if we see something there that I'd rather have it pop and something happened, then, you know, we're not seeing anything at this point. So it's a monitor, try to figure out what we can do. We've talked to Bomb Guards, they're not happy about that approach. And it's like, man, they have two other approaches. Should we talk to them about, you know, just closing that one off for safety purposes? And so we'll work with them directly and see if we can get through it.
Okay, that, yeah, there's, I've had a lot of phone calls on that. Anyway, thank you.
Sure. And then I think you were talking about the Pupopia housing that's new on, near Seventh Street? Is that the drainage issue?
Yeah, yeah, the two triplexes.
Right. And so we have adopted rules. It's basically, you know, we haven't forced anybody or have the rules to say that you have to manage your stormwater in a certain way. You guys have never adopted stormwater criteria. And so what it is, is, you know, you can essentially run it off your property and then you, it's like Wyoming, a fenced out sort of state at this point, which isn't great. But if we want to get more strict with those rules, we can talk about how to do that and then force positive drainage to certain areas where we would like to see it. But as long as it meets building code, you know, that's what we weigh it against, it can be approved. We've talked to the property owner and they're going to, they have a plan onsite to help manage stormwater. And they're being very kind and working with us. And we'll keep evaluating that and see what we can come up with. We have some right of way space, you know, a little worried about their pitch of the roof on the north side of that building and snow falling out. So there's going to be some management of, you know, snow on their property as well. So I hope they have a plan for all that because they're going to have renters and they're going to have to manage that situation. That's right through their parking lot. So they're not going to want to have, you know, stormwater there either.
So we should maybe get to planning and, and try to maybe hit that off for future.
Yeah, if that's something you want to do, there's people who have adopted stormwater rules. So, you know, as far as retention ponds and water quality goes, as well as ways you can manage stormwater. And so we can look at some of those things and I can talk to you at a work session about what they look like. You know, as we were working through building codes and being able to enforce, we're starting to get better at that. We never wanted to adopt more rules than we could actually enforce. And so, you know, I'll bring Hunter in on that conversation and then we can revisit it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Regine.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I have two requests tonight for unintended expenditures. So I'm looking for a couple of head nods tonight on, on two items. The strategic planning that's coming up. We really feel and, and we gave you guys a staff retreat where there's some things that really need to be updated in our strategic plan that you guys adopted in twenty twenty-three. In order to do that, we'd like to hire a facilitator. That was not in the budget anywhere. The bids I have now are running between six and ten thousand dollars to do that activity. It's well under our seventy-five thousand dollar go out for bid thing. But the quotes that I'm getting right now are in that range. And staff thinks it's very important that we go ahead and get a facilitator to get the strategic plan updated for you guys, something you could adopt and tell staff what to do for the next three to five years. But that's up to you guys. So I guess I'm looking for a head nod if we should go ahead and pursue the hired facilitator. I, I got a couple of head nods.
You have a couple of head nods.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Do we, you said you've had a couple of bids? I mean.
I have two now. I'm, I'm waiting for one more. The highest one right now is six thousand five hundred.
Mayor.
Go ahead.
I hate that it's costing that much. I hope we get a really good, good facilitator for that and productive sessions. But I think it is important. I think we've been much more accountable, one, and focused by having had that, that degree of connection between us and staff on priorities. Thank you.
Regine, are these folks that have experience with municipal strategic planning specifically?
Yes, and we've been through quite a few. Actually, we got four turn downs before I found three people that were, had some city knowledge that would go ahead and do this. I did talk to Shari and that money is available. It just wasn't a specific budget line item when you approved the budget. We're halfway through the year, the money is, is there and available. Okay. The next one is good news. The part-time temporary clerk position, Rochelle and I had great responses. We, I think we had nine applicants. We interviewed four people. All of them were good candidates. So we'd really like to get started on that scanning, document retention, archiving of our current files. We have ordinances and resolutions and laws that are currently hard to find and they're not searchable because we do not have them digitized. So that is, that's our first priority for, for this job position. We do have, like I said, a lot of good candidates. You guys originally, a year ago, said that we could have it up to six months. That would cost at the scale on that job description about five to seven thousand dollars. We know that six months will not do everything we need to do. So I guess I'm asking if we could have an additional six months or perhaps hire two of these two people to work in tandem so that we could get at least part of our files done and our priorities taken care of for digitizing our, our data.
Yeah, I guess I echo what Councilwoman Stubble said. Bummer that it costs that much. And having things digitized is one of the ways we increase transparency. And I think that's a value all of us hold and the public wants from us. So I, again, unfortunately, some of those things cost money. But that's a way to, to increase our, our efficiency and transparency. So I'd, I'd be a yes for that.
Yep. Is there any way you could repeat the cost?
Yeah, and we had a range in there. And so if you worked exactly twenty hours a week for six months at the range that we had, it would be between five and seven thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's not that much. I mean, really? I think it's great.
So if you want, if you authorize a second one or a longer term, it would be up to about fourteen thousand dollars. Again, the money wasn't approved as a line item in the budget, but Shari assures me that it's available.
Councilwoman Marson?
Yeah, so Regine, would you rather have it extended over a year's time? Or would you rather double up on there and get it knocked down to six months?
I appreciate that question, but I don't think we've had those discussions yet. I appreciate that question, but I don't think we've had those discussions yet. It would depend on the people that are willing to come and, and take that position should we offer it to them. So they have to be a pretty good team player if they wanted to do some job sharing. So it might be one person for six months, it might be two people for six months, might be one person for one year. We haven't really sussed that out yet. Did I miss anything, Rochelle? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Shari.
I just want to make sure we're on the same page about the half cent monies. That your desire for the, so we just finished a quarter, which would have been September through December. To give, still give the 20% to City of Riverton for air service, a 10% to WRTA for this quarter. And then we collect it through March of next year. So your intention is that we will make those two payments to those entities. We're just withholding the 70% and not distributing any of that. I just want to make sure we're on the same page on that. Okay, so you'll see those in the bills and claims then for next month for that December payment. The audit should be done. It's, I, I reviewed it today. So hopefully he's gonna present at the work session. He will probably do it Zoom. He's hoping that he'll have enough time for you all to be able to look at it and have questions if you have questions regarding it. And then next week, the mayor, myself, Ray Jean and Lance are headed off to WAM. But if anyone else would like to join us, we could get your registration in.
Get your tent.
Oh, and Melinda.
Different hotel too, so I feel like I've just completely been left out.
Okay, Adam.
Thank you. I do actually have something tonight. I don't generally share a lot, just because a lot of what I do is confidential. But tonight I've been asked to give a brief recitation on conflicts of interest in terms of voting by council members. This has come up from a, a different, a couple of different times at council meetings. And the mayor's asked me to go over what the statutes are and what the rules are. In Wyoming statute 15-1-127, it outlines what a conflict of interest is specifically for city council members when it pertains to how you vote and when you vote. I found some other resources, some from other states, some from within Wyoming. And there's a really good paragraph that summarizes essentially what a conflict is and what it's not. So I'm just gonna go ahead and read it. A public official has a disqualifying conflict of interest in a governmental decision if it is foreseeable that the decision will have a financial impact on his or her personal finances or other financial interests. In such cases, there is a risk of biased decision making that could sacrifice the public's interest in favor of the official's private financial interest. To avoid actual bias or the appearance of possible improprieties, the public official is prohibited from participating in that decision. And those disqualifying financial interests are whether they have ownership in a business entity that would directly benefit from the vote. And that would be more or less that they are, they have a substantial investment or they are a director, officer, partner, trustee, or manager in a business. The next one is if they own real property in which the official has an interest, including any leaseholds. And then obviously, like we talked about, personal finances, if they personally are going to gain from voting on something. So the reality of it is, is that if there is a perceived conflict or if there is a direct conflict with a council member, meaning that they are going to personally benefit from that vote or a family member would benefit from that vote. Or if they have ownership in a business or some sort of investment in a business, then they would have to let the council know prior to any discussion on that particular issue. And they would have to remove themselves from the vote so that they aren't going to influence it in any way, shape, or form. In my opinion, this council has been very proactive in letting everybody know about any potential conflicts of interest. Everything that I have read is that if there are any questions of whether or not there is a conflict of interest, whether that be direct or potential, it is to discuss with legal counsel, which would obviously be me. And I know that all of you have been very good to reach out to me and have discussions about that. To me, the biggest challenge is that gray area where it's a potential conflict of interest. And my advice has always been to err on the side of conflict and to avoid any, more or less err on the side of caution. Thank you. I don't know what I said, but. Oh, let's not err on the side of conflict. Let's err on the side of, yes, okay. I'm not even gonna say it. But, and, and to identify that and then to recuse yourself. And so we've always been very cautious in, in, in that approach. And I think it's benefited this council and past councils in identifying potential conflicts of interest. But I, I've written a memo on that and I've outlined some of the findings that I've found from this state and other states on that and some other trainings that have been done. If anybody would like that memorandum, I can certainly provide that to council members. And if there's any other questions regarding conflicts of interest, I'm happy to answer those questions. Or I can read you the statute and really bore you to death.
Anybody have questions, Adam? Thank you for doing that, Adam.
Yeah, Mayor, I do, I do thank you for doing that because I know this came up recently in a, in a decision. And I think it's, it's very clear where the conflict is. And so I do appreciate you sharing that with us. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you. Rochelle.
I don't have anything tonight unless somebody has any questions.
Any questions, Rochelle? Okay, we'll move on. Consent agenda, number eight. Nine.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
I'd actually like to remove the approval of the 25, 26 liquor license renewals because I think there's gonna be discussion about that.
You want item D removed?
Item C removed.
Item C will remove from there. Got a motion?
We have a motion.
Seconded.
Seconded, Councilman Larson. With the removal, approval of the 25, 26 liquor license renewals for the following. And we will talk about that here in just a minute. Someone call for the question, Councilman Jay Hong.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay. Now we go to item C. Discussion. Approval of the 25, 26 liquor license renewals for the following. I'll let you start.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I, I am inclined to not renew the liquor license for Wild West Warehouse LLC, DVA Grizzly Bar and Grill, given what we've heard from Captain Waugh and the significant number of incidences that have happened there. And I, I think according to our current city ordinances, we have grounds to stand on for that.
Yes.
What was this?
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
They could always ask for a hearing if that is denied tonight before this, the council to be able to defend themselves. They're not here to be able to answer any questions or to defend themselves. So that could be a potential issue or, I mean, something that you would have to deal with in the future.
Mayor.
Go ahead.
I think on that point, and I don't like airing on the side of leniency here, but I think where I'm gonna land tonight is voting to renew. But that we proceed with the process in ordinances 2.2-6 with a suspension. And the details where we serve by certified mail to the licensee, you know, the violations that we have documented, the nature and dates of those violations, and that they are up for suspension and/or revocation. And then within 15 days of that notification, the hearing is set and we get to learn more. The business is allowed and I'm opt, you know, don't wanna be, well, I won't say if I'm optimistic or not, but I hope that they would come with a plan of action that would be suitable for the police department to address all these violations. So I'm airing on the side of renewal tonight with proceeding towards suspension and/or revocation through the process we have outlined.
Councilman.
I didn't hear everything you said because my hearing aids messed me up. But anyway, my comment is, I think before we shut any business down, that we, we have them before us and we hear, there's always two sides to every story. And I, I think that, I think that they deserve that. I mean, just to shut the door right now without, with just one side. I, I personally would like to hear the other side of the story and, and. That's basically my comment.
Any else?
I like the idea of, I like the idea of having them appear before the, the council and say, you know, if they've got remedies for the, for the issues they've got or, you know, I, I think that's good, good business.
All right. So we can set time for them to come and meet with the council?
No, the council tonight will vote whether or not they're going to approve their license. And then after that, there's a process to go through to identify if there's been violations of our ordinance and if they qualify for suspension. And then there's due process that will be followed.
What kind of timeframe are we looking at with that?
There is no timeframe because it depends on if they violated the statute or not or the ordinance. So that's going to be determined at a later date after an investigation has been completed.
Councilman.
All right, Captain. What's the, I don't, I don't, not trying for information. What's the severity of the seven calls versus, you know, like, I know we have calls at other bars and stuff, but what's the severity? Like, what is it? Super bad stuff happening or?
So I looked at that specifically, to be honest with you. I just cranked numbers quickly just so we had an idea of number of calls. But if you look at, like I stated before, Lander Bar, we've had four calls and none of them are violent at all. In, in the end zone or the Grizzly Bar, 95% of the calls, we go there for violence or property destruction to somebody, their vehicle. So a lot of their, their call volume is, I don't wanna just blanket say more violent than anybody else, but more of their calls are violent than not, and that's not the case for the other bars.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we want to move forward, Adam?
It's, it's up to the council, but I think you have to vote on this no matter what.
Right.
I just don't, I, if you vote yes, then that allows the staff, meaning the police department, to continue to do investigation because we don't really know if these calls were happenstance. They might have all happened on the same night. There's a lot of ifs here that we don't really know. And I don't even know if it's appropriate to be discussing it in too much detail tonight without having concrete facts or having them present. So at this point, I think you move forward voting on however you wanna vote, whether you're going to approve it or not. And then that will allow the staff to know how to proceed.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve?
If I may, so I, I stated with the revocation is, I'm wondering if, if a suspension is a more appropriate venue, which would, I, I think would drive that process more of, we need to get more information. We want the police to be able to provide more information, et cetera. To me, if, if we give a blanket renewal, it, it seems like we're giving mixed messages of go ahead and keep going, but we have grave concerns about you.
Well, I mean, I don't think you can do a suspension tonight because you're not following the process.
Okay. We're gonna have to approve and prove them.
Move to approve.
I get a second?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Larson, second by council. And Hong, to approve? Any other questions? So I'll call for the question. Councilman Jay Hong.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
A reluctant yes.
Yes.
Moving on. All right, we're going to new business. To the, approve the transfer of retail liquor license number 10 from WR.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I forgot.
Prestidiously, I just wanted to see where we were. You moved to take liquor licenses off of the consent agenda. You voted about liquor licenses, but there's the remainder of the consent agenda to address.
Yeah, by trying to get through here. We do have. We, we've approved the consent agenda. And only just took out. Yeah, we, yeah, we had to vote, so. And now we're gonna move on to new business. Item A. Approved transfer of retail liquor license number 10 from WR Holdings LLC. VDA Zanders to Bailey's Enterprise, Inc. Pit Stop LLC, 730 East Main Street, Lander, Wyoming. Questions, concerns? There is none. Can I get a motion?
I would, I'd make a comment if I may. And I think having Mr. Bailey present tonight shows the kind of standard I would want to have for owners of these businesses to come and assure us of the practices they have in place and the trainings that they require. And as an aside, not for debate right now, but I, I'm very interested in us looking into the ordinances and requiring the, the tips training or other steps we can take to have more compliance and a little tighter rein on these liquor license holders than just renewal, you know, or non-renewal. So thanks for coming, Mr. Bailey. I appreciate that.
Okay, now can I get a motion?
So moved.
I get a second?
Second.
Motion by council. Man, Larson saying by Councilman Cox. Any other questions, concerns? If there is none, Councilman Larson.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Motion's approved. All right, item B. Award request proposal for groundskeeping independent contractor, Lander Communities and Convention Center to Austin Shields. Authorize a notice of award, authorize the mayor to sign an LLC groundskeeping independent contract agreement.
Just a question, evidently, Mr. Shields has moved back from Montana and is. There he is, huh?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yep. Anybody else? Questions or concerns?
Mayor, if I may.
Yes, go ahead.
Is it appropriate for me to ask Mr. Shields a question?
Can you get a motion?
Can I get a motion?
I'll make that on that premise. I move that we award the request for proposals for groundskeeping, for the, sorry, for groundskeeping independent contractor for the Lander Community and Convention Center to Austin Shields. Authorize a notice of award and authorize the mayor to sign the LCCC groundskeeping independent contractor agreement.
Okay. Got a second? Now here. Okay. Motion by Councilman Stubble, second by Councilman Hong. No. I'll let you ask your question.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Shields, do you mind coming up to one of the mics?
Step up to the mic right there.
Thank you. I think what I was looking for, Mayor and Council, is, you know, there's a variety of bids here in our packets. And Mr. Shields was a low bid. Thank you so much for what you put in. But I'm curious about your experience with this type of groundskeeping. Can you give us a little illustration of the, the types of other grounds that you, you've maintained like this?
I took care of the community center for three years prior.
And that was indoors and outdoors?
Yes.
Great. And can you tell me, was that when the community center was brand new or was that midstream for its life?
Midstream.
It was midstream. Okay. Thank you. I was under the misapprehension. I thought you were just indoors. So thank you so much. That's all I needed, Mayor.
Okay, you could have asked me that.
I could have asked you, but Mr. Shields is right here.
Hey, it's you. Okay, Councilman Hong.
Yeah, I just wanted to remind everybody that, that we took $100 off the, $100 a month off the main contract for cleaning the community center and just added $9,900 a year to the citizens of Lander. I think we should have discussed this a little more before we, before we jumped to that conclusion. It's $9,900 bucks. Anyway, that's all I have.
Go ahead, Councilman.
Thank you, Mayor. I, to, to your comment, Councilman Haun, you know, we had a constituent complain. We had a couple of other folks complain about the grounds. $100 a month to keep care of our community center grounds is absurd. And I think that if we know those things going into it, and that's what I talked about earlier, is about really being prepared as we come to council meetings. Because that is a lot of work and we should be taking care of our facilities. And we have to respond to, you know, constituents are upset by, I mean, I remember there was like lambs ear and the things and you have to go up and look and, and when you're looking at snow removal and weeding and all of those types of things at $100 a month, I mean, you're gonna get, that's $100 a month. So I think it's money well spent and I hope the constituents know that, you know, when there's comment and when there's. you know, when there's comment and when there's involvement, sometimes there's response.
My, my rebuttal to that is we've had contracts that have went all the way from the beginning and expected X amount, the contract has not changed. It, this is what we had and and then all of a sudden, and to tell you the truth, I, I hate to even say this, but to me, that's the excuse because we would not be in this position. We've never been in this position, but we have a family man, member in this. And I would, I'm not a betting man, but I'd bet that, that this wouldn't have happened if we weren't in this position. All I'm saying is, is, I mean, you can make all the excuses you want, uh, but this wouldn't have happened if we wouldn't have been in, put into this, uh, position. And, um, if that hundred dollars wasn't enough, it wasn't brought up when a lot of other people were cleaning. So to me, it's, it's, uh, um, to, to even say that is, is embarrassing. It really is. It, it is.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, just a, just a quick comment. Well, certainly you're entitled to your opinion, but I think that we have to understand that when we, I don't think it has to do with a family member. I think it has to do with the lack of response for that contract. And we had one, if you remember correctly, reading our packets, we had one for several years, and then we got two, and the bids were so egregiously separate that, and you have to take the low bid. And then we have to look as a, as a community, if we're valuing our assets, we have to take care of those things. And I feel like we've got good person here who put in a good contract, and we're gonna have a really good response to it. And it's gonna be a really good improvement for our community center.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Call for the question. Councilman Jay Hahn. Uh, hold on a second, Mayor. I'm reading right now. Okay. I'm actually looking at the contract that was eight, eight of twenty-four and all the stuff that was on there. Seeing as how we don't do our homework, I'm gonna look into that right now. Cause I know before, the outdoors was included. Yes. So why did we take that out if we're gonna bring it back in a different contract for a different employee? If we were getting it, I see, I see where Councilman Hahn's coming from. You're getting a better deal if you have it in the contract that if you bid it out at this amount, this is what we're gonna do. And if you don't want to do that, you don't get the job kind of deal.
Uh, Mayor, if I may respond, that's because the council voted to do it that way. And I don't think there was any opposition to it. I mean, I think, I think that's where this gets a little complicated is it was brought before us, we made a decision as a council, unanimous decision, um, to take that out of there and look at a better option. And I think even going against staff recommendation. So I think that, um, I mean, that's our, that's on us, that's our accountability piece. We made that decision as a collective.
I, if I remember correctly, there was actually a big argument about it and like contract was brought up, and if you can't do what's on the contract, you shouldn't have the job. I, I do remember the meeting, yes, and it wasn't unanimous.
I mean, we could go back and look, but.
It's worthless to argue about it. We're here now.
Well, I think it's just a, that's the part we're talking about is that we, we made that decision, we voted on it. It was passed to take it out, and then we opened it up for bid. And we got a, a number of quality bids, which is really encouraging actually, because we did not have that with the community center for the, the caretaking of the community center. And we don't typically historically have a lot of bids for that. It's a lot of work and, and look, and Austin could speak to that. I mean, you're on every weekend potentially for the entire year. I mean, it's, that's a lot. And you're one person, you're a one-man show, and it's not, you know, you think about, it's a contract, so you don't pay taxes, you don't pay benefits. They, it's what, thirty-five hundred dollars? So you're paying thirty percent on top of that of your own taxes, et cetera. I'm not, and I'm, I don't think that's enough for anybody, and it has nothing to do with a family member. It has to do with the contract we got.
I didn't bring up a family member.
No, but, but it doesn't have to do with that, this, this particular situation.
Yep. We're good. Lance?
Yes, Mayor. What was brought before you that you voted on previously was two alternatives. One to award the community center without grounds and one to award it with grounds. And you guys chose to award the first community center without the grounds. And then we had to put back together, you tasked us with putting out for bid, the grounds work. So that's what you have in front of you today is the grounds bid.
Okay. The other comment? I got a motion in a second. So. I did get a motion, didn't I, in a second? Okay, uh, call for the question, Councilman Larson?
Yes.
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 Motion carries. All right, moving on to item C. Authorize the mayor to sign a CBD grant agreement for one point two seven five million for the Jefferson Street expansion into the Pofa Aggie River Park. Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Then most by Councilman White, second by Councilman Woman Stubble. Questions, concerns, Ray Jean, I'll let you start.
Uh, this has been a year and coming. We've been waiting for it. We were notified of this award last year. Uh, all the environmental project that's required for this grant is finally complete. This is one of those rare grants where there is no match required by the city. So the one point two seven five million will go entirely for, uh, a new street access into the Propoja River Park and some parking, lighting, safety, lighting, those types of things. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
When does it start?
Uh, we can start charging tomorrow if you guys approve it tonight.
Okay.
I'll, I only have one comment. Um, Mayor?
Go ahead.
Um, can these kind of grants go to any of the streets in town? I mean, uh, uh, this, this is a, where I'm going with this is, and if, if, if it's, if this is specific to the park, um, I totally understand that. If it is just a street project taking and redoing a street, um, I, I just, it's just like the, the, the property up at, at, uh, up there at Baumgart's. I mean, I, I look at this and, and, and I'm not, I, I'm not totally against the park. I've just been sit on it for a while before we put money. But if that money could go to a street that is in dire need, I would rather, I would rather put it there. And so I guess my question is, is is this something that's app, that's connected to a park? Or is this just, is this just something that's gonna redo a street out inland?
Gotcha. Thank you. Um, so Community Development Block Grant is specifically for, um, uh, amenities for low-income neighborhoods. Uh, so this is specifically as written, we wrote it for park access for the surrounding neighborhoods, which is typically our R-three and our manufactured home parks. The reason we were awarded is because we met that low to moderate income, uh, criteria that Community Development Block Grant.
It's on the sides.
So.
Okay.
We call it Jefferson Street Extension, but in the grant is called, uh, recreational access for low to middle income, um, neighborhoods.
But it has to be in, in a specific spot like we had it?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And that's how it was applied for.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
And this is a hundred percent grant. We have no funding to it.
Yeah.
Okay. Got a motion in a second? Any more questions? Do you got one? Okay, I'm gonna call for a question. Jay Hahn?
Yes.
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 Motion carries. Uh, item D. Authorizing me, my mayor to sign notice of awards for construction, contract construction with Geico LLC in an amount of five hundred and fifty-three thousand, one hundred and forty-six and twenty-four cents for the Gannett Peak Sidewalk Project Tap Grant, CD two-one-five-one-zero. Uh, can I get a motion in a second? I have discussion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Stubble, second by Councilman White. Uh, this Lance, he's got his light on.
Sure, uh, this has been a, a project we've been trying to put together for several years now. And, um, it's had to been pared down from their original scope. Uh, it was overbid a couple of times. We didn't have interest in it. And now we're finally at the dollar amount that we have grant for to move this forward. Uh, found the, looks, hopefully we found the right contractor for the right price to make this one happen this summer. And this is major improvements to that school area. The one I'm most excited about is the entrance area, uh, at the alleyway. And then also some of our crossing improvements that are gonna be put in. So a lot of ADA improvements and safety improvements is part of this project. And this is, uh, you know, one of those projects with partnership with YDOT, and they were good to work with on this, um, tap grants have gone up in value for now that you can apply for from YDOT. And, you know, when we applied for this one, uh, there was a lot less you could apply for. But they told us we had too many grants awarded to apply for new ones. So hopefully we can get one built, and then we'll be looking at the next project as far as partnership with them. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Questions? Nope. Call and call for the question. Councilman Larson?
Yes.
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 Motion carries. Uh, authorizing mayor to sign a contract amendment for professional service with heirs to extend the master plan, plan, product deadline date. Any motion in a second?
Reluctantly, because we want this thing done. Uh, Mayor, I'll move that we authorize you to sign the contract amendment for heirs to extend the master plan.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Stubble, second by Councilman Hahn. Uh, any questions? Since there's no questions, I'm gonna take and call for the question. Councilman Larson?
Yes.
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 Motion carries. Authorize the mayor to sign a business associate agreement between the City of Lander and Willis Towers Watson Insurance Service West, Inc. for Health Insurance Administrative Services. And a motion in a second?
So moved.
Got a second?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Cox, second by Councilman White. Uh, discussion. Rachel? Is this yours?
This is just a, a document with our healthed, the company that administers our health insurance benefits concerning their obligations around HIPAA and things of that nature, but it requires a signature.
Okay. Councilman Jay Hahn, call for a question?
Yes.
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 Motion carries. Item G. Untable approval lift recommendations to fund the Lander Girl Softball League complex improvements.
Thanks, Mayor. I move that we untable, um, and approve the lift recommendations to fund the Lander Girl Softball League.
Can I get a second?
Second.
We're, I got two on. I'm motion by Councilman Stubble, second by Jay Hahn. One of the, so, uh, uh, discussion now. We gotta vote on this, yeah, to get it off.
So, so we're moving to untable, not to untable and approve.
Right.
Because what, I think we need to split those out.
Yeah, we gotta move to untable. All right, call for the question, Councilman Larson.
Yes.
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 Okay, now that's untabled, we can bring it back to the floor.
Mayor, yeah?
Yes, you may.
Uh, get ready to cringe, Councilor Phillips. I, um, I'm gonna move that we retable this. We're all laughing, to February 11th. Hang tight, you're gonna like this. To February 11th, um, with a work session to have discussion on this matter in January. And I do this with the, um, consent and through discussion with the girls softball league board who've asked, this is their preference. Because we don't yet have certainty on the amount that they're, they're requesting from lift. Um, they've had what I believe to be productive conversations with city staff, thanks Lance and your crew, around what repairs and maintenance the city will be responsible for in the softball fields that were originally part of the original package requested from lift. So that's an expense that's being taken off. Um, but there's still not quite clarity, as I understand it, about what the league would like to request from the lift funds exactly. And so I don't know how we would recommend or recommend an approval of funding amount, not knowing that dollar. But we can get that clarity, I think, and get certainty from what the city will, uh, provide in that work session and then vote to approve in February. Um, so I'm reluctant to untable and retable. It's very rare. I know we shouldn't do it, but we can do it. And I think this, these circumstances warrant that move.
I got a motion to retable it. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Got a motion, Councilman Stubble, second by, by Councilman Hahn to retable this, uh, till February. Okay.
I do have just a couple of comments about that. Did, we had a motion in a second?
Yeah.
Okay, so just in reference to some repair and costs associated with their request, there's a couple of things on their request, um, that I want to ensure whatever happens within that meeting. And I won't get into too, too big of detail, but specifically the lighting, the big dollar amount, it's part of their request, it's necessary and not just correcting the poles. So I hope that that discussion, what, where, or however that happens, that that is included, um, with intention. I think that's very necessary. And then obviously, um, the safety concerns that I have, that I've had since, I don't know, 2008 about, um, backstop depth, dirt depth. I mean, I, we, we need to know exactly what the city's willing to do and then, um, get, get there with the lift or with the Lander Girls Softball. So I'm okay with that. I just don't want to, I want to make sure that it's, there's no Band-Aid fixes, that we're actually doing the correct, um, completion of that park.
Councilman Larson. So do we have the time between now and February 10th to, to answer these questions? I think so. Do you? Okay.
I think so.
Do you think so, Lance?
May I emphasize quickly, Mayor, that last time we tabled this in November, um, late November, I believe, we asked for a work session and that didn't materialize. I think a work session, conversation with the softball league able to testify and provide information is essential in this round.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna call for the question. Do you have a question?
Well, more, I mean, I, I realize there's, um, the good news of all of this is it's highlighted that there's, um, specific need for improvements for that facility. Um, I also appreciate that the city has taken a deeper dive and has identified things that they believe they can and should address through that. Um, I, I don't believe that's appropriate to use the lift funds for that. And I think we are deviating from the process that we established uh, in response to constituent concerns about the, the big lift process. And so to me, you know, I think specifically about, in response to constituent concerns about uh, giving money proactively, that would it be spent in the right way? We required it to be a reimbursement process. You had to purchase and provide, uh, you know, receipts showing that the money was spent as the, the, a grant was awarded. Uh, in response to concerns about, um, you know, not having skin in the game, we required a 50% match for all lift awards. In response to constituent concerns about large dollar amounts being provided to any kind of entity, uh, we all agreed to a $50,000 cap. And I think it's important for us, while I, I absolutely respect what the softball team is doing, they have incredible, um, support from their members, their coaches, their parents have kids participating. It's a wonderful activity. Uh, I'm not in any way saying we don't want to support kids' sports. I, I think it's important for us that we abide by the process that we agreed to. And to deviate from that, in my mind, is destroying public trust in our ability to, to do what we said we're gonna do. So I'm more inclined to go back to their original request, get that done. And I think what they've highlighted is there are absolutely some safety needs that need to be addressed. And that's the city's responsibility to manage that with other, other funds for that. So I'm, I'm not inclined to table it personally. I, I think it'd be more appropriate to amend it, to go back to their original request, get that rolling so they have the ability to move forward with that. And, um, you know, in terms of o- other needs there, I would ask, so we're also gonna talk to strikers about what their needs are? What about Pee Wee Football? What, what about, um, you know, Legion Baseball? Like, all, all of these are awesome clubs that use our facilities. So I, uh, again, I, I I appreciate their desire for the work session. Honestly, I think that's better managed with talking to our city staff about what needs to be done. They're looking at it. They've identified things that can and should be fixed by the city. So I, I think we're actually in a place where I believe we could actually move forward.
Who wants on the floor now is to table it? I got a motion in a second. I see. Go ahead.
I just want to make one comment. I, I, I just want to make one comment on your comment. Um, the way things were going with lift is probably a big consideration of the way the voting went and the way it got knocked down. Um, there were, there were things that people didn't like about what was going on. And I, I totally understand what you're saying. I appreciate that. But it also, it also got killed because they didn't like what was going on. So you have to consider that too, or you should consider that. And I, I totally agree with what you're saying, but that, that's something to consider too.
All right, what's now on the floors to table this till February 11th? I'll call for the question. Councilman Jay Hahn.
Yes.
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 No.
Motion carries. We'll table it for the month. All right, H.
Mayor.
Yes.
Is there anything more you want from staff for that work session? I guess, uh, that would be great to get counsel direction if we need something or if it's just hearing from the softball group.
No, I would like to see cost, the general cost for things that they said it needed to be fixed, Lance. On my person, I know I'm counsel too, but.
Okay, I just want to make sure we have everything ready for that meeting that you guys want to hear if you're gonna discuss it.
And Mayor, for me, I, um, I believe in the discussions that have been happening, you know, that's happening, there's been commitments made, uh, by what city operations will provide. So I'd like to have that list. I think let's be really clear about what we're doing and then what we might seek lift funding to provide for the softball league to do. So, or, you know, we don't again, now we're doing polls, are we doing lighting? What are we doing?
Okay, I think that we can put together cost and estimate. Like, I met somebody out there on poles today to inspect them and to, you know, look at those and alternatives. And so we can bring what we have at that time, um, and we'll do the best we can to be prepared for that.
Thank you. And Mayor, just something for clarity and transparency, I just want to say the work session, but we'll have this discussion is, uh, the 21st. Is that correct?
No, 28.
I'm sorry, the 28th. There we go. Sorry about the 30s. The January 28th will be our work session.
Yeah.
Right.
Just, just by way of that, I appreciate you asking too, Lance, because I do think there, what I would like to see is actual cost of, of their request, essentially. Meaning, you know, those, the middle field has those wood light poles. They are not acceptable. If you're talking about, you're wanting to bring tournaments in, you're wanting to have fields that are legitimate. Those, that lighting is unacceptable. So I would want to know what the cost would be and if we could partner at all and, and how the city could, um, repair those or remove those. And I think also, it, we need to clarify, you know, um, so those, there's two current scoreboards on those fields um, that need to be replaced as well. Now, they're not even using the third field, using that for young kids and practice fields. There was some discussion about taking out dugouts. I would certainly hope that's not the case and repairing those, because in the event that we're having young kids eight and under playing on those fields, they need to have a dugout or a shelter so that that's safe for them. So I just want to make sure that we, we have those things cleared up, that communication of, no, we're not gonna pull out dugouts. Yes, we are, and why? Um, and then, so that we know exactly what it is that's being said and relayed. Um, I think there's some issue with some idea of storage that needs to be addressed. Storage is limited out there. And I know there's, those types of things you can all answer at the work session. Uh, but those are just some key points that I would like.
And I haven't heard you guys mention this, but you're simultaneously pursuing a master plan in recreation. And a lot of what we've advised the staff is to make sure you're making sound investments into property that we own, not property that we rent. And so I was wondering if you wanted to hear from heirs at that time, if some preliminary information on, uh, you know, potential new locations of ball fields as well. Because I don't want you to put something in and tear it up either. So if you're gonna make large investments in property or decide to do that, would you like that information as well?
Yes.
Oh. John would like that.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, we'll see if we can get that on and, and maybe be able to present something to tell you what, you know, conceptionally this, the community asked for and what's being drawn up in certain areas. And I think we can call it draft at that point, but gives you an idea to consider, um, you know, what we're doing and why, you know, we're trying to be strategic, make sure that we're, we're doing the right things with good direction and, um, you know, working in the right direction of what council has asked us to do.
I think my mayor, I apologize for not asking first. Um, my, my concern would be, I, I under, I know what you're, where you're going with the strategic plan as it, as it relates to recreation. Completely understand that. That doesn't resolve the current request. Because making a softball complex would not happen by this summer. And so there, there's no way, even with a strategic plan. And so there has to be some discussion about that timeline. Um, we, there's not, oftentimes there's not, you don't have the flexibility to wait. Um, there's an opportunity and you can't let it necessarily leave. And, and so I, I would want to know, as we look about strategic planning, I'm all for that. Of course, I'm all for recreation a thousand times over. But I think timeline wise, that is not resolve the request and the current need. Because you're, you're talking about kids that are 14 and under, let's just talk about the 14 and under kids. They don't have two years to wait for a complex to be built, um, to continue their desire to play softball in our community. And so I think we have to resolve that in some capacity during that work session.
Sure, and that sounds great. I just think some of our recommendations are gonna be based around, if we do invest in this, let's make it mobile. You know, let's make it somehow fit the master planning. Like, if you're gonna put lights in, lights that you can unbolt and hopefully, you know, move somewhere else if you decide not to continue to do this. My fear with the school district is we have no control over this property. Uh, you know, if they decide that tomorrow that's their new, uh, turf field and all of this goes away, all of it goes away and you guys can't do much other than complain, uh, that you invested in there and it went away. So just trying to shore that up, and I think the more information, the better. So we'll bring the heirs discussion in and then let you guys have great discussion about that. Uh, again, I'm all for recreation as well. That's part of our departments. We want to make sure that, you know, if money's coming in here, that's, that's a great thing, uh, to improve facilities. They aged as well as our infrastructure, you know, put in when mining was good and the community was blooming. And, um, you know, at this point, it's always hard to find dollars to bring things back and to put them in the shape everybody would like. So happy to have that discussion. I'll probably bring both Kevin and Hunter to be a part of that discussion as well.
Just real quick, since this is on school district property and they'll use it as well. I think we need to check and see how much they're willing to help support these activities out there. I know it'll probably be zero, but I still think I'd like to hear that from them verbally. They do not want to add any funding to this.
We haven't received that answer yet.
Yeah, but that's what I would really like to see happen too. Councilman Larson?
Yes, uh, Councilman Cox, I just, uh, question, why, why are the wood poles totally unacceptable? I, I just, I'm, I'm not understanding that.
Well, so, the, okay, this is a little bit out of my.
Councilman Cox, may I interrupt and say, I think we're a little bit in the, this is why we need a work session? And this might be more appropriate question for you.
Yeah. The, the, the lights aren't bright enough, is the layman's terms, but yes, I would agree.
Hey, where are we at with this? Do I need to vote on it?
We did vote.
And needing to vote on this?
No, we did vote, Mayor.
We did vote, okay. Yeah, we need to. All right, yeah, I'm moving to item, uh, H. Authorized mayor to sign, uh, Lander Municipal Airport Hangar Space Land Lease Agreement between the City of Lander, Matt Ramsey for space number 207. Any motion in a second?
So moved.
Any second?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Hahn, second by Councilwoman Stubble. Um, just basic stuff. Someone call for a question if there's no questions. Uh, Councilman Jay Hahn?
Yes.
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 Uh, motions, rule passes, uh, I nominate and let council president.
Mayor, I do have a nomination. I would like to nominate Councilwoman Julia Stubble as our council president.
Is there any more nominations? Any more nominations?
Do we need to second that?
I need to read it three times. Any more nominations? Since there is none, uh, I'm gonna call for the vote. Now, no, it's not saying, I mean, just the nominations.
No, there's a vote.
I'll hear in just a minute. I'm, we're gonna do it individually, but so we're gonna ask for a vote, and we got one nomination, which I don't think anybody wants to take it from her. But I will call for your vote, Councilman Larson.
Yes.
Call for your vote, vote if you like.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilman Hahn, I can do it individually, Councilman Cox.
Yes.
I'll, oh.
Councilman Hahn, yes. Hey, most, welcome.
All of state, thank you, Mayor.
Then you can abstain, you fucking got it.
Okay, great.
All right, thank you.
Uh, thank you for the nomination, Councilor Harrison Cox, and for the confidence, uh, council members. I, um, especially after interrupting you in that last item. Here we go. Mayor, I think you and I are gonna get those cups of coffee that we've been trying to get. So thank you, I, I'll take that duty seriously. I appreciate the confidence.
Welcome aboard. A little meet, sit down, get me any time schedule for your night to meet. I'm good. All right, nothing else brought before this council? Yes, ma'am, did we forget something? Okay, I'm gonna call for adjournment.
So moved.
I get a second?
Second.
Over the question, Councilperson Larson?
Yes.
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 Any adjourn? I carry this one. I run down, had to get a coat today. That's about the right size for this meeting. Yeah, I heard better, I thought we was, you did good. Thanks, Councilman Hahn.
Oh, yes.
On these days, we need to call.
They signed in front of a.
What's that? Oh, you have to catch you on, I think it's like there or something, my boss is a little weird.
Well, I don't want to, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we'll definitely catch up.
Okay, sounds good. You?
I did.
Monica had her surgery today. She doing well, Sam? Check on my granddaughter, she's at home now, but that's all she has. By 30, so she had a knee surgery on her left knee. When we kept, it's a slight over the side.
Yeah.
When she was born, it was born with a defect. And.
Something like that, does it keep popping out?
So they're gonna cut all the nerves in that, blood mess. Nicely, but they got to really watch.
And they do on the day, just maybe.
Yeah, you know, the room. But she can't, I'll have her raise it or head, did it cause her to breathe anytime. Running your senior.
Yeah.
People, right?
And you are going to Cheyenne?
Yes. Are you?
Yes. If we have our grandbaby.
Oh, that's right.
Then I'll go. If I do, then I will.